All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order. It's June 7th, 2023, it's 6:00 P. M. We're at Oak Ridge City Hall and we're having the special session, which is the fiscal year 2324 public hearing on the budget. First order of business, it's a pledge of allegiance, if you rise please.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is Jackie online, James?
Yes.
Jackie, could you take the role, please?
Yes. Counselor Coker?
Here.
Counselor Bjornson?
She has an excuse absence this evening.
Counselor Charman?
Here.
Counselor Hooker?
Here.
Mayor Ketchum?
Here.
Counselor Kenyon?
Here.
Counselor Hollitt?
Here.
All right. First here is additions, corrections, or adjustments to the agenda. Do any of the counselors have any adjustments to the agenda? Okay, nothing heard. James, do you have anything you want to change?
No.
Okay, nor do I. So we're on to public comment. Do you want to hit the written comment first? Okay.
Happy to read those.
Please.
All right, so we've received two written public comments tonight. First is from Diamond Lamb 48329 Commercial Street. Our email public comment states, greetings to all of you. I know how difficult your jobs are, but for the record, I'm not alone. I am not at all in favor of the public safety fee. Also, I am not in favor of anything that raises our utility bills, so I am not in favor of a proposed gas tax or proposed franchise fee on utility bills. Keep in mind, you are serving people, and if you want our support, you will need to stop adding more taxes to the government. Thank you, Diamond Lamb. The second is from Kelly Brewer of 48471 Hill Street. Email states, counselors, mayor, and budget committee, and writing to you today in regards to the proposal to include the voted down public safety fee, being illegally attached to the citizens' water sewer bills. I feel that I speak for the entire city when I say that this is a gross overreach of a city government. This action will cause a tidal wave of negative attention, and I fear for any council to vote this in. I'd like to bring your attention to the city of Onslow, Oregon. You read this article, you will see it had an eerily similar situation. Against the citizens' wishes, a public safety fee of $12 was added by city council to the city water sewer bill to provide 24-hour police services. This came after the claims of shortages and threats of losing police to protect the city. The citizens were ignored after requesting that it be put to a vote. Once he was added, the city bam, together fight back. He attached a link to a Beijing Journal article about Onslow. With this said, we, the people of Oak Ridge, have spoken. City council put this fee to vote, and the citizens voted no. Then you proceeded to include it separately. Once again, the citizens' vote, which voted no, be a non-finance. Now, here we are again watching some of our voted officials bandy together to become a dictatorship of government. The autocratic leadership, these leaders tend to make choices based upon their own ideas alone, and do not listen to their team or seek input from others, has become tiresome. The agenda being proposed as a, quote, pay or else you lose your water and sewer services, unquote, leaves me no choice but to say, if this agenda item passes in the city council vote and is attached to our water bill, I, Kelly Brewer, personally take on responsibility as chief petitioner to petition a recall of all counselors, including the mayor, that vote yes on this agenda item, we will see a huge outcry. Our citizens who are already distrusting of our city's leadership. With this said, I urge all counselors to vote no and continue to search for other ways to keep our public services. City of Oak Ridge struggles financially at the whole, and there's absolutely no reason that our citizens have to choose to support the city's mismanaged finances or have their water shut off. I love our city and desperately want to take pride and receive government leadership. Unfortunately, there are a few that cause great disappointment of the whole. I would like to see our city thrive and benefit from a trusted government that puts its people first. Thank you for your time, Tom.
James, when do you want to address the public safety committee input?
Probably before we start the discussion.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, there was an input that I think you received from the public safety committee making a recommendation about the budget.
Right, isn't that, oh, that's not considered public comment?
I guess, yes, from a committee.
Okay, anybody in the room for public comment? And welcome the, the budget committee members that chose to come. Thank you very much. And we see we have one online. Ms. Hammond, do you have a comment?
Yes, sir. Trudy Hammond, 76349 Willamette Way. And I just wanted to offer some services for the animal, but buying item of 400 that I have free collars, leashes, harnesses, dog food, flea medication for the Oak Ridge Police Department as needed when they pick up an animal. I also have, currently I have some space available. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hammond. And James, can you and Chief Martin follow up on that? Thank you. Any other Zoom comments, public comments? All right, nothing heard, we'll move on. Do mayor comments, announcements, and proclamations? I have none for this forum. Council comments or announcements? Anyone online? In the room? Okay. And there is no consent agenda, so we're down to number nine, business from the city council. The first is 9.1 Resolution 11-2023 adoption of the approved fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget with public comment. So I'd like James to introduce this from the staff, and then I'd like to go into the public comment so we can get input from any, those that choose to speak on the budget. We'll also do the same thing for the following shared city services and election to receive. Counselor Kenyon, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. I want to understand exactly what we're voting on tonight. Is it to basically to accept what the budget committee forwarded on to us? And then my bigger question is, will we have another hearing if if we decide to make any changes to that, that budget that's proposed?
So the purpose for tonight is to conduct the public hearing to get input from the citizens on the approved budget, the budget committee approved. Nothing says we actually have to make a motion or even approve this budget tonight. You're welcome to do that. However, if you want to change things, then we would have to have either another meeting or we could conduct it probably if you wanted another meeting, but we'd have to have a meeting, go through all that and make the changes. And obviously, if it changes more than 10%, we'd have to reconvene the budget committee and have a burn and have another public hearing. So those are the, kind of the way it can work. Understanding that there is no guidance for operating the government after June 30th, so that's that to say what you do, you just go into the void. So in any case, that's the, kind of the choices, but tonight, the primary purpose of this is to hold the public hearing on that budget. You agree with that, James?
Correct, yes. So this was properly noticed in time, which didn't cost $900, so I see when you're noticing the hole, I'll be wanting more. Great reading.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's kind of the way I would like to do it is, is have James introduce, and then we'll have the public input both online and in the room, and then decide if someone wants to make a motion. We also, I think, want to go through the budget committee's recommended motions prior to the sort of the underlying motion here and see if we want to take any action on that. And then go from there. That makes sense?
I think so. Mostly my clarification would be if we did this Resolution 11-2023, that would be
To adopt.
Adopting the budget.
However, for our council procedure, a resolution has to be read twice, perhaps once by title. So that would have to happen tonight if it was unanimous, and if it wasn't unanimous vote, then we'd have to look at that resolution one more time, probably on the 15th is what James is going for. And that would, that's for all three of those.
Okay, now I understand.
We're good?
Thank you.
Okay. All right, James, do you want to introduce the subject?
Sure. So back on April 17th, the city released the first version of the budget called the Proposed Budget. That was released to the public, available online to everyone, copy available here, et cetera, and then we started having budget committee meetings. Seven of those. And after the seventh meeting on May 30th, the budget committee voted 9 to 1 to approve budget that we worked on during all those meetings. That is now called the Approved Budget. Called the Approved Budget, it's been approved by the budget committee, not approved by council. Council now has the opportunity to hear public comment. Look at the approved budget approved by the budget committee. And then when they're ready, vote to pass the approved budget, which will then become the adopted budget. I don't know why they chose approved for the budget committee. Approved budget and adopted for city council, because it makes it a little confusing. That's the proper nomenclature, and that's where we're at at this time. So we're looking at the budget, other matters, city council is just going to look at is certifying city services, which is a requirement for receiving state funding. And also a resolution approving the city receiving that state funding. And if I skip the, as part of the budget, the property tax early rate, which the budget committee has recommended remain at 7.1996 per 1,000 assessed value. That would also be provided by city council, so those are the matters in front of council tonight.
Okay, any counselors have questions of the staff before we go into public comment or public hearing? Counselor Kenyon?
That last part that you just mentioned, the 7.119 tax amount, I don't see that on the agenda. Did that just get missed?
Well, so best practices from League of Oregon Cities, et cetera, is to pass everything in one resolution. But this council's practice in the past has been to break them up into separate resolutions. So that's why I made the made three resolutions, but I included the tax rate in the first resolution, 11.2023.
Okay. That's what I was wondering about, because I didn't see four resolutions. Okay.
That's what I could have done, and that's an option for council.
Counselor Coker?
So that keeps the property tax at the 7.1996 the same as it's been?
For at least three years.
A lot of years.
The only, the only thing that will change your taxes is your assessed value. Any other questions to staff on this before we go into public comment? Okay, so we are going to now open the floor. We use the same guidelines as for public comment, three minutes, the standard stuff. So I will first ask those online, if you have a comment on the resolution approving the 2324 budget, understanding you'll also have a chance to comment on certifying city services for state funding and declaring the city's election to receive state funds. So Ms. Hammond, if you have a comment on the budget itself, please go ahead.
Yes, sir. Trudy Hammond, 76349 Willamette Way. And my question is, with this approval, does this include the public safety fee funding going into the general fund? And if so, is there any kind of stipulation that prevents any loans against the deposited amount into that fund for other services or projects and stuff? I don't know if that makes any sense, but I'm just wondering how protected is the money that, from the public safety fee in the general fund, from being borrowed?
Thank you. That's a kind of, yeah, have a point of order here.
I do have a point of order. I believe we're supposed to be having a public hearing, which requires opening a public hearing and asking for
I checked with League of Oregon Cities on, on this, because I, I know that there's a land use public hearing where you do have to open the public hearing statements in, statements in favor, statements in opposition, statements in general, and then it's over. They said there's nothing in the statute that says that's required for a budget committee. They says many cities often choose to use the same form as a public comment.
And you're right that the city had, the city has done it that way a couple of years ago, but we didn't have to.
Are you more comfortable doing it the old way? I'm fine with that if you want to go through that process.
You know you're doing it right. Just wanted to know, because we've always done hearings in the past.
Yeah, I'm just trying to streamline things and still give the people a chance to speak. So anyone else online have a comment on the budget, the Resolution 11, 2023?
I can answer for Trudy's question.
Okay.
So the answer to Trudy's question, the public safety, the current ordinance lasts through the end of fiscal year, so it's still, in fact, it does not need to be repassed. Bishop, it's already that. As far as borrowing money against it? I'm not sure if I understand the question, but I think the short answer is no.
Okay, in the room, any comments, people in the room on this resolution? Okay, nothing heard. What do, you know, James, why don't we go in and read the budget committee motions with relating to the budget, not the shared revenues or anything else, but just the, the ones that relate directly to the budget?
Okay.
So the council can hear them.
All right, so the budget committee made some motions, which are recommendations to city council. I'll start with the most recent, that was on May 30th. A motion was made to approve the city of Oak Ridge fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget. That motion passed 9 to 1 during that same meeting. Now, this doesn't pretend to be.
That one does, the next one down, if that's what you're reading.
Oh, yeah, they all, they all, I'll read all three. So during the same meeting, they made another motion. The motion was, I move that the committee recommend the city council that once the fiscal year 2223 has been closed out and the fiscal year 2122 audit is finalized, we reconvene the budget committee that passed and the deal went unanimous. Third motion, also on May 30th, was a motion, committee recommend city council public safety fee remain at $22 per month fiscal year 2324, but be added to the water bill, payments be credited following order. Public safety fee, then stormwater, then wastewater, then water. That motion passed seven in favor, two against, and one staying.
Okay, those are the ones that are directly related to the budget, right? Okay.
And I did forget, did I read the public safety committee? Motion, so there was a motion from the public safety committee during their April 25th meeting. But unanimously, it stays as follows. Recommendation, the city council and budget committee. The public safety advisory committee voted unanimously during their meeting on Tuesday, April 25th, 2023. The recommend the city council and the budget committee, that both bodies consider increasing funding for animal control services during the current budget process.
Okay. All right, so I guess what I'll do first, since these were recommendations of the budget committee, is see if any counselor wants to make a motion on their recommendations to the city council.
I have a question.
Okay.
So the adoption, or, yeah, I guess the adoption of this budget would include the safety fee going on the water bill? No?
No, not until someone decides to make a motion and it passes. Right now, it would just stay status quo at $22 and be billed as it always has been. All right, is there anyone, counselor, that wants to make a motion on any of the three? The two, actually, are the ones I'm speaking of, the two motions that were made by the budget committee and recommended to the city council? Online? All right, in the room? Well, I'll make one. I'd like to make a motion that the to move that the city council wants the fiscal year 2223 budget or financial have been closed out. And the fiscal year 2122 audit is finalized, they reconvene the budget committee to consider a supplemental budget, and if it needs to be drafted. Okay, motion was made by me and seconded by Counselor Charman. Discussion on this motion? From anyone online? In the room, any discussion? Counselor Kenyon?
It is what clarification of the motion? Once the does the motion say, once the audit has been received and the fiscal year is closed out?
Yes.
Then we automatically reconvene the budget?
We reconvene the budget committee to determine if a supplemental is needed.
Oh.
And if it isn't, then they'll just, this banned, and if it is, they'll work on it and help the staff in that effort.
Okay.
That's much behind it, but. Okay, any other discussion on this? Jackie, did you get that motion in its whole?
I didn't get all of it.
You got it, James?
I got it.
Okay, James will get it to you.
Okay, I was gonna ask that.
Okay, no further discussion on this motion. Would you call for a vote, Jackie?
Yes. Counselor Coker?
Hi.
Counselor Hooker?
Hi.
Counselor Kenyon?
Hi.
Mayor Ketchum?
Hi.
Counselor Hollitt?
Hi.
Counselor Charman?
Hi.
All right, passing unanimously. Are there any other motions to be made about these recommendations from the budget committee? Online? In the room? All right, I'll go ahead with it. I move the committee recommend to the city, or I moved that the city council, that the public safety fee or let me reword that, I move that the public safety fee remain at $22 per month for fiscal year 2324, but be added to the water bill and payments be credited in the following order, public safety fee, stormwater, wastewater, and water. Second. All right, motion made by me, seconded by Counselor Charman, discussion on this? Online, any discussion? In the room? Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Counselor Kenyon?
Nay.
Counselor Coker?
Nay.
Counselor Hollitt?
Nay.
Mayor Ketchum?
Hi.
Counselor Hooker?
Nay.
Counselor Charman?
Hi.
All right, motion fails. Now we're on to, if anyone would like to make a motion on the primary adoption of the budget, or is there a discussion that we want to have another session to dive into it?
Well, do we have to have a motion on the table to have discussion?
I'm happy to take that, yeah, that'd be nice. All right, I move we approve Resolution 11, 2023, adopting the approved fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget in the amount of $11,691,828 and making the associated appropriations and imposing and categorizing taxes. Wait here a second.
Second.
All right, motion made by me, seconded by Counselor Charman, discussion.
Do we have a report from our city administration on this?
On what? The, it was what he gave in the beginning of this whole discussion.
Oh.
Yeah, and there is a, the agenda bill attached.
I just wondered if it was going to be brought up about the first two columns of the budget being the same, whereas was made explicitly clear in the budget section that the first column needed to be the proposed budget. And then the second column would be what was approved by the committee. And then that was not what was presented to us.
Yes, so we do realize that we call for the proposed budget, that's the one that initially came out on April 17th. Those figures are not in the first column of the approved budget. All that Colleen explained, what happened with that, she was, it's like that with someone from the state. I think some of her understanding is that it was okay to call snap the proposed number to the approved numbers. How, how they, probably.
So I'm not sure what that has to do with reviewing the budget that was approved by the budget committee. According to the Department of Revenue, the only line that needs to be to the right of our budget that we have is what we are working on. There's no rules as to what lines we leave on there, changes, but the the proposed and then any changes made by the, the fire dance department or, I'll get that squared. It's only just a working tool to be used as we can track up changes during that budget process.
Counselor Hollitt, do you have a question? So your hand went down, I'll assume you don't, okay?
Sorry, my fault.
Okay. Any other questions? First questions for council? Let me just make one real quick for, I do see value in having those numbers that are Uh, let me just make one real quick for, um, I, I do see value in having those numbers that are the previous numbers, just so you can see where the changes happen with the, what the budget committee did, so if you make them both the same, you have no idea of the work that the budget committee did and what they altered to sort of make the budget what they, or constituents are telling them they need, so I, I do would like to have that column in its original condition upon passing this budget, so, councillor Kenyon?
Um, I just wanted to add a comment that the forms that we use are forms that are, um, provided to us by the state of Oregon. And in that first column, for as long as I have been reviewing the council budgets, which is probably a good twenty years, has always been the proposed amount. The next column is approved by the committee and then the final column, it shows the progress. I feel very adamant personally that it needs to be that way. We asked for it last year because it didn't end up happening and I'm asking for it again now and.
Yeah, so, so Colleen was kind enough to provide, uh, sort of a conversation you had with Melanie Cutler, I'm sure you guys know, and it's in your package.
Yeah, I got it about four minutes before the meeting.
Yeah, and it sounds like, it's not mandatory, but in my mind, if the three columns are there, what, if, if you're only having one column, then only be one, talking about one column, then only be one column, so, to me, there's great value just as a working document to have those numbers, but any other comments, questions, concerns about that? And how do you want to, uh, register to need to um, figure out a way to address that requirement in the motion, so?
What, one option for council, because the ORS is are clear that, that right now, the city council is supposed to only discuss the numbers in the approved column. So council is not even supposed to discuss the proposed numbers, however.
Yeah.
Right, exactly, however, I tend to agree that I think the work that we've done should be reflected somewhere. And it's, it's not accurate to have the proposed numbers match the approved numbers, because they didn't. Um, so council has the option of still approving the budget tonight with the caveat that the proposed column changed, that's an option. Or simply table the vote. To our next meeting, which will just be fifteen, Thursday.
So before I withdraw the motion and allow someone to make a motion that talks about filling in the proposed, I, I, it's, um, is there an intent that we're ready to vote on this motion if it's, is, it's decided that way, or do we need time to go into this budget?
I think it should be tabled and brought back to us with all three lines, or with every.
All the lines, because it's more than just that, we, some of them have fired this one.
So.
Well, I think we should be able to see it all, just to see where it was, where it's going.
So then I'll put all, so then all the lines should be.
I don't understand the other ones that you're talking about.
Yeah, when you guys kept coming back to us and saying, change this, change this, and we made any line to make all the changes.
No, I think all we're asking for is James's originally proposed budget, what that read like, that's all. None of this, none of this work the budget committee did, don't have to worry about that, all we want is what was the proposed budget, which is, but the budget.
I know, but you're saying you want to see the work, so if you want to see the work, I mean, this is.
All I want to see is the proposed budget, thank you. Um. So I guess what I'll do is, see, it's withdraw my motion. And is someone willing to make another motion about the budget?
I would, I'd like to move that we have the proposed budget column updated with, with what was actually proposed to us and brought back to us. On consideration.
Six fifteen. Okay, uh, motion was made by councillor Kenyon. Wait here a second.
Second.
Second by councillor Coker. Um, James, it's, it will be an issue getting it by the fifteenth of June.
No?
Okay. All right, um, discussion on councillor Kenyon's motion. Online, any comments, discussion? In the room? Okay, Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Yes, um, will you repeat the motion, Dom?
Yes, I move that we direct staff to update the proposed budget column to reflect the numbers that were given to us in the original budget proposal. And bring them back to the next meeting on June fifteen.
Okay. Counselor.
Oh, wait, hang on a second, Jackie, I see, councillor, uh, councillor Hallid, do you have a, a question or?
Yeah, I just had a quick statement, I am not going to be voting on this motion as I have an actual conflict, as my spouse is an employee of the city of Oak Ridge, so I'll be abstaining on this one.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry, Jackie, go ahead. Uh, yeah. Go ahead, Jackie.
Okay, councillor Hooker?
Um, hi.
Councillor Tarman?
Hi.
Councillor Coker?
Hi.
Mayor Ketchum?
Hi.
Councillor Kenyon?
Hi.
Okay.
All right, motion passes unanimously. Uh. Moving on. Nine point two. Resolution twelve, twenty, twenty-three, that's certifying city services for state funding for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, um, with public comment. So James, introduce this and then I'll ask for public comment.
So as per ORS two-two-one-point-seven-six-zero, cities located in counties with more than one thousand inhabitants are required to pass a resolution or ordinance certifying that the city provides at least four of the public services listed in the ORS in order to receive state shared revenue. We currently provide seven of these services which is, which are listed on the resolution. And so basically, we should, we should pass resolution saying, yes, we have to provide four or more of the public services required in ORS.
Okay, um, what I'll do now is open it up to the public and understand that this is about the money that we receive from the state and the federal government that, uh, comes to us, shared revenue. And as part of that, we agree to, uh, do certain services, and so uh, there's an option there, you don't have to accept them, which means that you're not required to provide some of those services, but that's what it's about, so. They like to have for the public a chance to comment on it, because, um, some may not want to in, take, partake in those shared services and in the way the city is implementing them, so. Um, I'll ask, any public online want to comment on shared city or certifying city services for state funding, shared services or shared funding? Nothing heard, anybody in the room want to talk about shared services? All right, nothing heard there, um. Do I hear a motion on this thing?
I made a motion.
Okay.
I move that we approve resolution twelve dash twenty, twenty-three, certified in the city of Oak Ridge, provides at least four of the public services required to receive state shared revenues.
Second.
Okay, motion made by councillor Tarman and seconded by councillor Coker, discussion on shared services, here to revenue. Online? In the room with councillors, no? Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Yes.
Mayor Ketchum?
Hi.
Councillor Coker?
Hi.
Councillor Kenyon?
Hi.
Councillor Tarman?
Hi.
Councillor Hooker?
Hi.
Councillor Hallit?
Councillor Hallid, are you abstaining with this one as well?
I can't see your name on there.
I don't see it on there.
It's an off-world order, so.
Okay, I just will say that she dropped off, is there any more that, Jackie, was that it?
That was all.
Okay, so, motion passes. Um. Moving on to nine.
Should I do the reading?
Oh, yes, please.
Resolution twelve dash two-zero-two-three, resolution certifying city of Oak Ridge provides four or more of the required municipal services for state funding. Whereas ORS two-two-one-point-seven-six-zero provides as follows, section one, the officer responsible for dispersing funds cities under ORS three-two-three-point-four-five-five and other ORSs shall, in the case of a city located within a county having more than one hundred thousand inhabitants, according to the most recent federal census, disperse, disperse such funds only if the city provides four or more of the following services. Police protection, fire protection, street construction maintenance and light, sanitary sewer, storm sewers, planning and zoning and subdivision control. One or more utility services. Whereas, city officials recognize the desirability of assisting in the state office, certain responsible for determining eligibility of cities to receive such funds in accordance with ORS two-two-one-point-seven-six-zero. City of Oak Ridge certifies that it provides the following services. Police protection, fire protection, street construction maintenance and light, storm sewers, planning and zoning and subdivision control and water utility services. This resolution can affect immediately after it is passed by city council or fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four.
Are there any additional motions on this resolution that would like be made?
Yes, I move that we approve resolution twelve dash twenty, twenty-three, certifying that the city of Oak Ridge provides at least four of the public services required to receive state shared revenues after the second reading by title only.
All right.
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, motion made by councillor Kenyon, seconded by councillor Hooker to, uh, approve the resolution and do it a second reading by title only. Uh. Any discussion on this? Okay, Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Mayor Ketchum?
Hi.
Councillor Kenyon?
Hi.
Councillor Hallit? Councillor Tarman?
Hi.
Councillor Coker?
Hi.
Councillor Hooker?
Hi.
That's all.
All right, unanimous, um.
I'm going to do the reading by time limit. Resolution twelve dash two-zero-two-three, resolution certifying city of Oak Ridge provides four or more of the required municipal services for state funds.
Great, uh-huh, moving on to nine point three, which is resolution thirteen, twenty, twenty-three, declaring the city's election to receive state funds with public comment. Do it the same way, James, you want to introduce this?
It's another state requirement by the state law is that cities must pass a resolution or ordinance declaring the city's election decision to participate in state shared revenues program, in other words, accept those funds from the state. The budget committee, uh, recommended, uh, unanimously on, in point four, that, that council do so. And so I drafted, uh, resolution thirteen dash two-zero-three, we declare city of Oak Ridge's election to receive state revenue for the next six weeks.
All right, um. So we'll open up the floor again for public comment, public hearing. Um, again, this is related to the last one, it's, this is our testifying that, or certifying that we, uh, are willing to accept these funds and, or return for the requirements that are so involved. So any public comment online on this resolution? In the room? Okay, do I hear a motion then?
Make a motion. I move that we approve resolution thirteen dash twenty, twenty-three, declaring the city's election to receive state shared revenues during the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-three, twenty-four.
Wait a minute.
Wait, that's the same one?
No, my question is, why does it say twenty-three, twenty-four, it's supposed to be? Oh, no.
Yes, we do, yeah. If you're okay. Thirteen, twenty, 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 twenty-three is the resolution.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I just.
All right, so just to restate the, the move, uh, was, motion was to approve resolution thirteen, twenty, twenty-three, declaring this city's election to receive state shared revenues during fiscal year twenty, twenty-three, twenty, twenty-four. Motion made by councillor Tarman, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, seconded by councillor Kenyon, discussion on this? Online, any discussion? In the room? Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Yes. Councillor Coker?
Hi.
Councillor Tarman?
Hi.
Mayor Ketchum?
Hi.
Councillor Hooker?
Hi.
Councillor Hallit? Councillor Kenyon?
Hi.
Okay.
Motion passes unanimously, uh, James, you want to read?
Right. Resolution thirteen dash two-zero-two-three, resolution declaring the city's election to receive state revenue. Whereas state revenue sharing law, ORS two-two-one-point-seven-seven-zero, requires cities to annually pass a resolution requesting state revenue sharing the money, and whereas in order to receive state revenue during fiscal year two thousand twenty-three or two thousand twenty-four, the city of Oak Ridge must pass a resolution approving participation in the program, and now therefore be advised by the council of the city of Oak Ridge that section one, pursuant to ORS two-two-one-point-seven-seven-zero, the city hereby elects to receive state revenues for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four.
Thank you. Were there any other motions connected to this resolution?
I move that we approve resolution thirteen dash twenty, twenty-three, declaring city's election receive state shared revenues during fiscal year twenty, twenty-three, twenty, twenty-four. With the second reading by title.
All right, motion made by councillor Tarman, do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by councillor Coker, discussion on the motion. And online, anyone in the room? Okay, uh, Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Yes. Mayor Ketchum?
Hi.
Councillor Hooker?
Hi.
Councillor Coker?
Hi.
Councillor Kenyon?
Hi.
Councillor Tarman?
Hi.
Councillor Hallit? Okay.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, motion passes unanimously. James, you want to do the title?
Sure, Resolution thirteen dash two-zero-two-three, Resolution declaring the city's election to receive state revenue.
Thank you. Um, there was no items on the consent agenda. Orders and resolutions, we took care of, public hearings, we took care of, public comment, any public comment online? Nothing seen, any public comment in the room? All right. That leaves a motion to adjourn.
I so moved.
Need adjourned.